We will now administer the school board member oath of office. It is an honor that you're elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district, with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of our new students in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, we will be asked to fulfill the vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. And providing vision, the board, with extensive participation of the community. In visions, the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. And let's see.
Just link the mission. But that gets, and then sort the uh newly elected board members to respond with. The other, you can do it together here.
Do you want us to stand or?
I would, yes.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board member, the superintendent, their independent school district number two three six five, to the best of my judgment.
Very good. Thank you. And then for these forms you are going to sign.
Yeah. I know also and and you get to sign them.
You'll sign them as board chair. They they each have an individual form that we can get that.
You already signed the official one after the election. Ceremonial.
I would like to call. This this meeting of the Independent School District twenty three sixty five is special organizational meeting to order. It is sixth January twenty twenty five. The time is six oh four. Do I have a motion? To let's see. Yeah, do you approve the agenda?
Yes.
Only motion approved agenda. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, raise the show of hands. One favor. Gender is approved. And we go to them. Oh, it's very. Now we're gonna stand first of all for your pleasure to read. Now to the election of an officer. Initially, do I get? Motion. Nomination. A nomination for chairman. Well, I'm gonna ask you more. Do I have a second on that? I'll second it.
We don't need to second.
That's okay.
Just nominate.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none? Three times.
That's okay.
Somebody has been given my proper. Are there any other nominations for chairman of the board? And now seeing none. And I mean, there's three mark. You will not call roll was that?
You do not need to. You can elect by acclamation.
Okay, all those in favor of Russell Miller as board chairman, raise your hand. And Mr. Miller is chairman. You may pay attention. I got it right here. So now we'll move on to vice chair. We have a nomination for the vice chair position.
I nominate George Grossom.
Do we have a? Second nomination? Can I nominate myself? I will do that. And a third time?
Now you call for.
Role call.
No, you called for it a couple more times because there was another nomination.
Okay.
Okay, any more nomination?
Any more nominations for vice chair? Here's that there's none. So any? Any more nominations? Uh plenty. Okay. Uh so now we have to. Do a vote. So who? Who votes for George? It's four. Yeah. So.
That's all you have.
All we need. Okay. So then we can move to clerk. Do we have a nomination for clerk of the school board? Did I make nominations? There are no look. I would like to nominate Emily Stare. Is there a second? Nomination from anybody? Third? Congratulations, Emily. Okay, and the last position is, is there anybody that would like to make a nomination for treasurer?
Nominate member for you sister.
Is there a second nomination? Renee memory agree. Is there a third nomination? Fourth nomination? Yep. Okay, so we'll do a vote for member Breeze was nominated first. Okay, number Amy. Congratulations, number Amy. So that gets us through the officers. Now. Too far. Now, uh time to conduct other business. Uh designate GFW school district depositories recommended. Designating First National Bank of Fairfax and PMA Financial as primary official depositories and perennial bank of Onethrop and Midwest Bank have given as secondary depositories for twenty twenty five. Designate GFW school district newspaper, recommend designating the Fairfax Standard Gazette and the Onethrop News as the twenty twenty five GFW Public Schools official newspapers. Item C, name GFW school district legal counsel and authorized contact. Recommended designating the law firm Kennedy and Graven as the twenty twenty five GFW Public Schools District Official Legal Counsel and superintendent and board chair as legal contacts.
And Chair Miller, I would make a motion on those three if you if you would at this time, or through all those three.
Okay, before we move on to the next. So can I have a motion to? Approve the designated GFW school districts depositories, the designated GFW school district newspaper and GFW school district legal counsel as authorized.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
I would do it separately.
You do each one?
We'll make a motion to approve the first one.
Okay, so motion one, which is the district depositories, uh do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I'm favored. Approved. Item B, uh designate GFW school district newspaper, I have a motion to uh designate the Standard Gazette and the Onethrop News as the official newspapers of twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to designate. I'll second that.
I'm favorite. True. Um item C, name GFW school district legal counsel and authorized contact with a motion to approve law firm Kennedy and Graven as the twenty twenty five GFW Public School District Official Legal Counsel.
Make a motion to make any grave in the official legal counsel.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, in favor? Free?
Question on the official or the district legal counsel and authorized contacts. So the superintendent and the board chair are the legal contacts? What does that officially mean?
So that means that if that if if the board ever believes we need legal counsel, that either myself or Chair Miller will be the ones to make the contact to Kennedy and Grayman.
Simple as that.
Right, that's all that's that's saying, so. Otherwise, otherwise, it can happen that Kennedy and Grayman get called from six different board members. So.
You're right, I'm nuts.
But it does again now who.
Just give the points of contact. So it's not typical like the clerk would be involved in that.
Uh normally, it's just two, two people, board chair and because if if we're calling legal counsel, it's risen risen to a certain level. But it's the board chair and superintendent issue.
Okay. So. That was a good question.
Yep.
Okay, we'll down the screen here, so. To. Uh letter D, so uh set school board stipends mileage meal reimbursement rates for twenty twenty five. Recommend the following: board and committee meetings, fifty dollars. Chairperson annual stipend, five hundred dollars. Clerk annual stipend, three hundred dollars. Treasurer annual stipend, five hundred dollars. Mileage reimbursement, IRS rate of seventy cents per mile for twenty twenty five. Meal reimbursement. Uh number one, breakfast, general services administration rate. Two, lunch GSA rate, three dinner GSA rate. Can I get a motion to approve the school board stipends mileage and meal reimbursement rates for twenty twenty five? I'll make a motion to approve the steps. Any a second?
I'll second.
I'm favor. School board stipends has passed. Uh item E. Appoint GFW school board committee members. So um. The first one here is the executive committee. It's the second Monday at four thirty PM. Oh, it's just like we have. We have.
You appoint. You can appoint.
But we have open discussion about.
So Norm, quite often you would ask, is anyone interested in serving in this capacity?
Okay.
But then the board chair would appoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
If there are questions about what each one of them does, we can certainly talk about.
And uh the executive committee can only the chair, vice chair, clerk, or treasurer be on it?
Yeah, three, you can have up to three.
Yeah.
And it can only be an office of certain executive.
Okay, which would make sense, I just. Think I'm sure. Okay. Well, do we have any volunteers then for the executive committee? Oh, yeah. I was up to be on it as well, and uh.
You have to.
Yeah, so so that checks out. Good. So congratulations, you guys. Um the next one was going to be the finance facility and long long range planning committee. That's the first Monday, which we just had on today at four thirty. Can I get any volunteers for this committee?
I'm sorry, and I think you should stay on this committee while we're working on the building. It's a senior area of expertise.
So that's the discussion. I want to bring up because um there's multiple people that are interested and that are capable and have good skill sets for this position. You know, and I could easily. I'm uh Dr. Smith, I'll be meeting with you more than I am right now, okay? So it'd be pretty easy to sit down with you for almost like we did today for thirty minutes, just run through what's going on with the school, and I can look at the change orders and whatever they're proposing. Um I can easily do that. Uh as not part of that committee person and also be available for you members to call me and ask for advice. Um otherwise, for the ones that are interested, we would have to have somebody, if we truly want me to be on it, then we have to have somebody step back, and I know there's three people with a lot of interest.
You want three, can have three.
Yeah, we can have four, yeah, four, yeah, so. Um I would personally ask that you stay on there myself. Okay. Then.
If you can make the decision.
Right, I'm just, it's it's a. So the other way to look at it is. Um you know, it'd be nice not to have, you know, the executive committee and the FFLRP are kind of like the top of the as far as the uh basis, made this some big decisions to be, you know, your hands in both of those. You know, if I stay out of it, that would, we we wouldn't have a overlap in each one. Um but if I did stay on it, it was, I would, I would step back probably just after the school's done, just be on it to help get that school. And but to be honest, that school is kind of in cruise control mode too, you know, everything's documented, it's it's gonna be built, what's on paper is just keeping those everybody in check at Carl's Anderson and uh you know, like we like the pictures we looked at today. But I can certainly walk through that site once a week too and and uh make those observations if we want to get new blood into the FFLRP, so. I think I manage jobs for a living and I manage a lot of them at one time, I can think I can add this one to my plate and still uh assist um this board and the district with what I know and make thing, you know. Let you guys know what you should look out for when you're meeting with Carl's Anderson. I can call Dusty personally and talk to him, um as I know him now, um.
They told him to keep those fingers out of that contention.
Yes, yeah, and uh I I can easily do this from a distance and then let three people run that committee. So I think what we're gonna do is um nominate Amy and Ken and Mark for the FFLRP committee. Then we go to policy committee. Any volunteers? So if you've already been listed once, you only, you can only go one more time, and we have three more or two more to go, I'm sorry. So. Amy, okay. George.
I did that here the first one.
Uh Amy, remember chair. Okay, George, and.
You only need to, you don't have to have three, it's up to you.
Yeah, I think it's kind of nice, it just makes it even for everybody. Um now, Mark, you're on the uh FFLRP. Um you're currently on policy and community engagement, correct? So I have to take one of those spots.
Thanks. Stay on community engagement and help me on the other one or whatever.
Okay, and then I can switch with them, keep me on policy, which I'm already on, so.
Well, we have two members right now, George and Amy on policy.
And I will be the third, third.
And then you'll be on community.
Yeah, yeah, so policy committee is Amy, George, and myself. And then community engagement would leave um uh Mr. Breeze needs one more and Mark and Emily for community engagement, which you know, we don't want to, I don't think we shook things up too much, we still have some old blood in the in the uh committee and some new ones coming in and uh this goes only a year and then we can we can reevaluate, right? So that takes care of our community engagement committee. Now, we have some questions, uh Dr. Smith, so.
Excuse me, Chair Miller, you have turtle and who else on community engagement?
Me.
Emily and Breeze.
Thank you.
Thank you. The River and Special Education Cooperative representative. Is that a, are you part of a board down there?
Correct.
So this, that could be, and they meet once a month?
Right.
So we couldn't do it by committee? Where everybody would take two meetings a year?
It's it's really hard for them.
Okay.
And for a member here to do it on part-time basis.
Okay.
Cause it, I think Chair Merkel, former Chair Merkel would say it takes a while to understand all the programs down there.
Sure.
If you're here one meeting and not back for another six months, it'd be hard to pick that up. Um they do the meetings virtually, so it's not a drive down to New Ulm. I'm just uh normally they're in the morning, and I believe it's a Tuesday morning, um so that.
They meet on Tuesday morning.
I believe that's the dream.
Hopefully, I get six A hours.
Yeah, I I should verify that in a week. We could assign somebody and I should have had that available for tonight here. I apologize for not having that. Um cause that certainly will impact whether some folks can do that or not.
For sure.
But I know they are virtual, Dan said, so.
Well, that's a huge step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Well, so. I mean, we can.
But you um excuse me for interrupting, but you could name a a member with an alternate. Um.
Okay.
And that would give you some protection and.
And so it's it's a one time a month for do we know if it's an hour or if it's two hours?
Probably about an hour, I would guess.
And that's a pretty important uh meeting to an organization because we send, it sounds like we send more and more kids there every year.
We send a good number of students. They're they're a vital organization to our yeah, to our program.
Well, do we have any any volunteers that would like to uh represent us for Riverbend Special Education Co-op?
It'd be nice to know the hours are meeting.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, well.
I apologize, I would. I don't have the capacity working full-time and three children to make this.
Agreed, so you know.
I could start.
Um and I can certainly you know, my my job meetings come as the jobs come and go, they change, you know. But if I'm part of it, then I can just say, no, I'm not available on Tuesdays, but it's only one Tuesday a month, so I I will uh remember Breeze, if you really want it, it's yours, but otherwise I can do it. Um I could be the alternate for sure.
Well, between the two of us, I suppose we could do it.
Okay. Okay. I will uh I will nominate uh member Breeze and I will be the alternate for uh member Breeze.
And I will get the timing and dates of those meetings here, but it is an important position and uh you know, you are acting as a board, you're approving the Riverbend
Yeah.
budget, you're you're doing all the work that you folks do here on behalf of that.
And is there like, how many more members are on now? Is it like ten or something like that?
That's, I don't think it's uh there's members Sibley East, New Ulm. Sleepy Eye, at Cedar Mountain. They're considering joining, but will not for next year yet. Uh so I think there's seven members.
Well, um. Yeah, we'll uh let member Breeze now be the alternate. So what if you could give a little more information then? Then uh remember reason I can talk to see if that works for him or not.
Okay.
But I can certainly uh fill that role if maybe um. Okay. Uh did you get all that? All right, uh so the Minnesota State High School League representative. Could you tell us a little bit more about what that is?
Yeah, it's, and I I didn't think you had one last year and probably wasn't missed really badly. Uh but it's normally the high school league asks for a board member to be their rep and they occasionally, and when I say occasionally, maybe once a year, the high school league will come to the New Ulm region and hold a meeting and just talk about high school league initiatives, issues, finances, whatever, and uh there there are board reps that are invited to attend that meeting.
Is, can anybody tell me why we maybe haven't had or how, is it bound, we haven't had one for a very long time till?
We have had one designated, uh because we have to sign off on that every year. Um and there has been one designated, I think he just flew under the radar.
When we changed committee structures, we lost both or all three, well, sorry, just the two, the Minnesota State High School League representative and the Sibley County Children's Collaborative Representatives. We, when we changed committee structures, those two fell also under the radar, but.
We can have Miss uh Chair Merkel, former Chair Merkel sign off on it.
Okay.
But he didn't.
Probably didn't go to any meetings. So it's.
You have to have somebody nominated for it, uh but we really don't have to do anything, that's what it comes down to.
Get perhaps some mailings from the high school, you you know, emails from the high school.
Along with all the other forty we get a day.
Typically, the A D could scare out.
Yeah.
Everything left of the Minnesota State High School League.
Okay.
We do have to have a board rep though.
Okay.
Sign off, sign up, pay for it.
Well, this sounds like a pretty important uh position to fill, so do we have anybody that would like to uh wear that hat? Or? Anybody else? I think uh it's a nice hat for you to wear, for girls, and thank you for volunteering. And then the last one is the Sibley County Children's Collaborative. What is that entail? Because that is uh, we haven't really talked about that.
No, and I don't, have they had a board rep? I don't know.
Yeah, so.
Were you?
Yep, I was on that until we changed committee structures and then again that one fell off, as I always say, but they do host. Um. It's for sure quarterly, if not monthly, meetings. I was never able to attend one of them because they are during the middle. It's for sure quarterly, if not monthly, meetings, I was never able to attend one of them, because they are during the middle of the day. Um. That is the most that I know, and I apologize, but that one, yes, they do host meetings in, I believe it's Gaylord. Yes, so.
And now they've been the last. I'll speak to what I know about it, I've been members of collaboratives in my other superintendent positions, so that they are a. Combined group of county people and public school officials, um, that work on programming. For mental health and physical health in our students, so they are, there is funding that covers. Part, we don't really contribute directly, but um, there's. They have funding that supports that organization and some of the positions within that, um, and so you're, um. They meet quarterly, at least the notices I've seen, um, and actually, the last two meetings have been canceled because of lack of. Agenda, so it's not a very active group, but, um, but their, their chair, who is the. Sibley County employee, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm missing her name, thank you, um, asked that. Said, you haven't had somebody for a few years, could you?
Well, we probably.
Have a board rep on here.
So it's, it's basically mental health oriented?
Yeah.
Is that true to say?
Primarily. They're primarily, and they deal with other things, but that's, that's where they started there.
Very important, um. Well, it's uh something that we should put somebody there for sure, and I'll, but the time of the day is probably the difficult part of it.
Yeah, this one was like, uh, their last meetings were originally scheduled for like one thirty and they're virtual.
Yeah. And it's quarterly, so you only gotta worry about four of them a year. Um, okay, and I'm guessing they're not even an hour long, maybe, but uh.
Yeah.
If, if they have a lack of. So if they didn't have one for half a year, you know, they didn't, there's a bunch of talk, I guess. Um, it almost sounds like they could get away with just having newsletters. Well, nonetheless, though, that's an important organization, so, uh, is there anybody that would like to volunteer to be our representative from the school board? So I mean, if it's a one thirty, I can pencil that into my work calendar, just have virtual meetings from wherever, so, um. Now, how do we contact, like, Sibley County?
Minnesota State High School League, it is paperwork that you will have to approve. At a board meeting, and then our rep will sign off on it.
I think it was just one signature last year.
Correct.
So that completes all of E, so now we have to make a motion to approve everything we just talked about?
No, that's just.
Okay, so, we can move on to F. Which is establish meeting dates for regular meetings and committee meetings of the whole. So currently. Um, FFLRP meets the first. Um. Week of the month, and the meeting of the whole piggybacks that meeting, so. When I was kind of doing my matrix here, I was trying to break up people from being here for four hours. Um, you know, on both, both of those, depending on what community you're on, um, so hopefully that's. Especially, uh, Member Breeze, I was trying to do that for him. Uh, but anyway, uh, so FFLRP, and meeting of holes the first, uh, uh, usually Monday or Tuesday of the month. Uh, the exec committee meets at four thirty. On the second week of the month. Uh, Community Engagement and our business meeting is the third, and then Policy is the fourth. Does anybody have? Any changes that they would like to make, anything we can do different or, or better? I'd assume it's been this way for, since the committees, committees were organized.
It has been, the only thing that has changed has been times. Committee structure, yeah, but like for the regular board meeting, um, the only, it's always been the third. Monday of the month.
It used to be at seven.
Yeah, and the times have changed, we've gone as early as five o'clock.
Yeah.
We've gone as late as seven, but that's.
Yeah, it's really up, you know, it's up to the.
What's.
Board's work schedules, that, you know, I've been on boards with a couple dairy farmers, they didn't really like six o'clock meetings, uh.
Yeah.
So it really depends on what your work schedule is and.
Yeah.
You know, there's, so there's nothing wrong with what we have, if that works for everybody, but if not.
So, I'll just, I'll just ask, so. Number two, are you good with six o'clock for both, you mean, uh, meeting of the whole and business? Amy? Number three? How about, how about the, the busy mom?
Yeah, what time do you get up for? I usually am done at four thirty, I think it goes up at four thirty, so a meeting starting at four thirty probably doesn't work for you. It's a little tough, yeah, um, I don't have a better time to propose though, because you go from four thirty over to six. That just works.
So you're on the executive committee, and you are currently, how long do those meetings usually take, the two hour and a half to?
With Kelly and Hall.
Okay. Well, they'll just have to train the new one to work on the same.
When I started, I think we were starting at four, and I got back to four thirty, and, and it could possibly work at five even, but.
Well, that's what I'm asking, it, it sounds like that might help you.
Yeah, we can, we can.
Five would be great.
Depends on the schedule, how much you have.
Yeah.
If there is a fuller schedule, we can start at four thirty, but otherwise.
Even quarter to five or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think. The, the, it sounds like, well, let's finish one through the line here, uh, Member Breeze, are you okay with the? Still the six o'clock time for the business meeting and the, and George?
Yeah, I'm good with.
Okay, I think it's might be up to your, your individual committee on, you know, what you, you know, we've canceled in the past, especially the community engagement, there isn't. There's, there's a busy season with that, and there's a non-busy season, so it's almost like you look at your crystal ball. One meeting ahead and see if you need to meet at four thirty, quarter to five or five o'clock, and, um.
Kind of is a super tense.
Policy Committee is kind of that way too.
It is, I agree, it's like, because what's not. Enjoyables, if you're here at four thirty, you're done by five, and now, you have an hour before you have, you'd rather just roll right into the next one and then, you know. Get back to home or whatever, let's say. So, um, okay, well then, uh. We have to make a motion to pass that, or?
Once you set the meeting dates for the business meeting, though, we cannot change.
Okay.
The meeting, committee of the hall, you can do.
Yeah.
You can say it's five and you want to meet at four thirty, that's okay.
But the business. This meeting, six o'clock, third, uh. Monday or Tuesday of the month.
Yes, we start the year with two Tuesdays, getting our Monday holidays, but otherwise, they're all Mondays.
So I could just ask for a motion to approve the, uh, the, the meeting dates for the regular meetings and, uh. Or just the business meeting early is all we, is that all the only one where they have to approve?
Yeah, that's all you have to.
Yeah, so I'll just ask for a motion to approve the, the six o'clock, uh, business meetings as they've been in the past.
I'm making a motion to approve six P M.
Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor? Alright. Um.
And I would just comment, the plan is that we, committee of the whole will be that first Monday here.
Yes, yeah.
I'm part of that motion.
Correct, yeah, like, uh, we're doing right now. Um, Wayne gives me the super fast cursor here. Well, I guess that concludes our agenda, um. Thank you everybody for all your nominations and your volunteering, and, uh, it's hard to get everybody where you want to be, but hopefully we came up with a. Solvable solution, at the end of the day, we're all board members here to do one job, and, uh, I think we have a strong board, I'm looking forward to working together with everybody. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Thank you.